Oh, okay.
This is a regular meeting of the Henry County Board of County Commissioners being held on Tuesday, January 28, 2020, at 10:30 a.m. in the county commissioner chambers in Lovell, Florida. In attendance are Chairman Mitchell Wills, Vice Chair Emma Burke, Commissioner Darryl Harris, Commissioner Michael Swindle, Commissioner Carson Turner, County Administrator Jennifer Davis, County Attorney Mark Lapp, added interim clerk Kimberly Barinow.
Thank you, ma'am. Getting started today, if anyone would like to speak today, there's cards in the back and you would just fill it out, turn it into the side here, we'll get you called up as we get to that portion of the meeting. Moving forward, there's nothing under bid, so the consent agenda.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Swindle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to awards and appearances. Habitat for Humanity Lee County, Henry Counties. Jake, you here this morning? There he is.
Yes, I am.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Jake Burbach and I am from Habitat for Humanity of Lee and Henry Counties. And at Habitat, our mission is seeking to put God's love into action by bringing people together to build homes, communities, and hope. And we strive to break the cycle of poverty through affordable homeownership for our hard-working, low-income families. Now, in 2019, our affiliate built our 1,600th home. And quite frankly, this is a milestone that simply would not be possible without our dedicated volunteers, our generous donors, and our engaged community partners, partners like Henry County. So today, on behalf of Habitat for Humanity of Lee and Henry Counties and all of the families we serve, I would like to present you with this plaque recognizing your significant contributions and continued support for affordable homeownership. So thank you all so much.
Awesome. Very nice.
Thank you. I understand that we're going to have to pick this here.
Thank you. One, two, three. One more. Smile, Darryl.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Thank you for all you do. We appreciate that.
It's awesome. Thank you for the presentations. Very nice.
That's a lot of homes.
It is.
It's going to bring us to public hearings. Petition number VC-19-0001. This is an adoption hearing.
Good morning, commissioners. This agenda item is simply a vacation of portions of a lot from a 1925 plat. The bottom line is, is that this needed to be done in order for Burger King to rebuild.
Mr. Chair, I entertain a motion to approve the vacation.
I second it.
Adopt the resolutions accordingly.
Motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Burke. This is a hearing of the public. Would anyone in the public like to address this? Seeing none. All those, number one, conversation on the board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Really light agenda this morning, huh?
I like these morning meetings.
Like the morning meetings.
Yeah.
Okay, FYI, everyone sees our staff reports, Ms. Davis.
Yes, sir. Before you... I have the avail benefits proposals for your consideration. There are two options before you that will supply wellness as well as long-term planning for our health benefits. The goal and the idea is to utilize these services in order to save dollars in the long run. Health insurance and insurance in general is one of our largest expenditures in the budget. And with their expertise, we're looking for long-term savings.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I know that there's representatives from Avail here, and if y'all are dying to hear a presentation, I understand it, but I just have a couple of questions. Is how, how can we guarantee that we're going to make the employees engage? Obviously, the numbers are striking. Of a $3.19 million cost, $2.5 million is on the county side. And so I, you know, think it's obvious. I'm a huge proponent of this. I'm glad to see them here. I'm glad to see y'all are searching this out. We've got to be able to lower these premiums. But they've given us a couple of options here. What's your recommendation, Ms. Davis? And then I want to hear from the rest of y'all.
I'm sure she's going to say if they had more parks to go to, they would be healthier.
Yeah, right? Full court, air-conditioned, rubberized basketball court.
Right.
So my recommendation is for you to engage in what you're comfortable with. They have three different options here. Maximum engagement, option one, and option two. They, you know, in previous conversations that I've had with them, they're very clear that we are not going to get the return, if you will, on option two as much as we might get with option one. And as far as the engagement for the employees, part of the recommendation is to establish a wellness fund within our own budget. And that will be something that we've never done before. And that it will look like whatever we probably want it to look like, but it can be different motivational-type things where we can have a better health fare. You can do different contests. You can give monetary things to people. Whoever wins the contest for losing weight and various different things. But that's why we are looking for someone like Avail, because that's not what we do, right? So that's what they do. And so that's what they do all over the place, and they are the experts at doing that. And so that's where we're looking to engage a partnership with them.
Mr. Chair, the return after one year, correct me if I'm wrong, you feel that the return after one year would justify the existence even on option one?
Yes, sir, please.
Ms. Davis, do you agree with that? Yeah.
So I'm sorry. I asked a question again.
Yes, sir. My question is, if we, you know, option one, the difference is, let's call it a $25,000, it's not really, it's probably $19,000. But anyway, your graph shows us that in the event we go with option one, we're going to receive a return on investment time-certain. You feel that's a fair statement off of what's been provided with the data that I have?
So the difference between option one and option two is the speed of implementation. Think of it as man-hours. Everything we do is strongly related to our staff being deployed in a given location. We have some counties that fall under this maximum engagement proposal where we are the entire benefits department. When we say maximum engagement, we mean we do everything. Option one is us being engaged and doing all the services that we lay out. We don't do risk profiling in what we're proposing as option one. Risk profiling is where we determine what your risk tolerance is. And if I say anything that you want me to stop and explain, just stop me. But we don't do the risk profiling. We don't do the decision principles, which is where we help you determine and build out decision-making tools, for lack of a better word. Typically, to get the first-year low-hanging fruit, you've got to have at least some degree of those services to be able to identify what options are inefficient and attack it and deal with it. That's not to say we won't find some things. So without us being able to really dig in and get deep into it, for me to be 95.9, you know, 99.9% certain we're going to get that strong ROI the first year is kind of tricky.
What's option two?
Option two is when we don't do any implementation and mapping at all. It would rely on the staff. We would help the staff and guide the staff, manage the processes.
Is that the only difference?
Yes, sir. It's speed of implementation. The ROI comes a lot faster with option one.
Because I know the program should pay for it, Seth. And, you know, after reading it, option two was what I would like to start with.
And, Mr. Chair, I would be the exact opposite just because of, if I'm understanding it correctly, it would still be reliant on Ms. Davis and your staff to implement on option two. And I'm not, I'm not being derogatory. I'm stating facts here. How much bandwidth does Ms. Davis and our staff have to be able to implement anything more than what they already are doing?
Well, that'd be a question you need to ask.
Well, when you say map out, you mean map out the activities that the members are doing, the walking, the eating? Is that what you mean when you say map out?
We build physical maps, implementation maps.
That they need to do?
Correct. And we do the same thing for the administration or administrative procedures.
As far as hospital visits? Because I know that...
Accountability to the members, things like that.
Okay. I know that one that I was in, they implemented, like if you did your colon, they, I think they gave them $75 if they did it every five years. Or if you did your regular once-a-year physical, you know, different things like that. So, okay.
There's a lot of different, I mean, to expand on that, there's a lot of different options that are out there today that we, we interview dozens and dozens of school districts and counties and cities to see what everybody's doing, best management practices, kind of mentality. And there's a lot of ways to deal with, with trying to implement different programs. One thing we would do is try to determine what makes Henry unique, to figure out which one of those, you know, approaches would work the best here. And that's what we would map out. That's how we would go about doing it.
And, Mr. Chair, I'd just add to that, that, you know, we had a, we had a group of the constitutional officers, consisted of the constitutional officers, our county administrator, and I don't know if there were other employees that were engaged in that discussion. But we kind of, in my opinion, we laid the gauntlet down to ask them to engage this process and say, "Help us lower our premiums." Now, two years past that, we've done nothing. The premium has gone up, and, and I just think that we're, we're going to be barreling down that same path along with adding a $60,000 cost towards it if we, if we don't bring in an outside entity to say, "Here, let's move forward with this" and actually implement something that's going to attack these, these premiums.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, I think to your point, Commissioner Turner, they didn't meet because they couldn't meet. They just couldn't get time. They couldn't make it happen. I don't think they didn't support the cause. They just weren't able to put it together. And I'm not huge, you know, look, at the end of the day, you know, we struggled hard last year with our insurance premium. I know Albritton was a big part of that and very helpful through the process and everything. But at the end of the day, we, you know, we do need to make proactive measures. If, if we're going to go out on the limb and invest money to make this happen, which I don't necessarily have a problem with, but I think that we ought to watch it and very closely, make sure it's being implemented, have markers where we look and make sure. Because if it's not, or we can't see that it's saving the money at a six-month-year mark, we don't, this is not something we need to keep investing in if it's not showing that return at said times.
How many counties do you represent?
Currently, we represent one, two, three, four school districts in different capacities, three counties, one city.
Do they all have option one?
No, sir. They all are, they're all over the place. We've got one school district, very large school district, that is option one. We're doing a very specific task for them.
But most of them's two?
Most of them, most of the counties are maximum, which is above two. But it wouldn't be realistic or fair for me to imply that I could bring you a solution with maximum right now, because we just don't know everything you need. Every county's different and unique in how we approach it. So we may come back in two years and say, "Hey, we have this great idea." Jennifer and I look at it and say, "We think you should do this and implement an additional portion of the program." The other counties that we have, we've had for a long time. And we've had a long time to figure out exactly the culture in the county, how the, how the health care is delivered. You simply cannot turn these ships around in one year. You just can't. All of your loss, all of your premiums are calculated on three-year loss histories. So if you just think about it in that context, it's, it's unreasonable for you to think that you're going to see some significant savings on your premium in six months. That's just not, I'm just being honest with you. That's just not going to happen. And I understand. And that's why we need the conversation. So if it's whatever, whatever the collective wisdom says, we need to be able to look at this at said time and say, "This is a good investment. It's working," or "It's not." If it's two years, three years, or whatever it is, I have no problem with that. Yeah, you'll, so at the end of the first year, you should see some, from us, what you'll be seeing is a very well-designed strategy on how we're going to turn this thing around in the three-to-five-year period that you have to allow for your loss histories to adjust. Okay. And we will also, by then, have identified the low-hanging fruit. But when you go to contract with an insurance carrier and you've got a one-year contract, the ability to make adjustments in any way, shape, or form in one year...
Almost non-existent?
It's, it's...
It's at the mercy of what nature does.
That's right. So what we would do initially is we would build out what we refer to as substantive data. Every single county has a different fingerprint, every single one. So we would build out a substantive data mine and determine what makes you unique. And then we're able to tie you back to best management practices. We're going to do that in parallel with building out the wellness program. Something to think about is any functional, we call it member services instead of wellness, because in reality, it's three separate parts. You've got health literacy, which is educating your members on what to do. And then you've got member engagement, which is helping them make the right decisions at the point of care. For example, where do I go to get my MRI? Where's the cheapest place to get the MRI? At the moment in time, they have to decide where to go get the MRI. If we've done a good job on literacy and we've given them the right tool, they're going to make the right decision to go get the cheapest.
Which is, which is something that, that is really aggravating to me, that we've, I don't want to say we forfeited that, but that was one of the big, that was one of the big caveats that was stated whenever we were going through the gnashing of teeth in this discussion was, "I don't want my insurance person to be able to dictate to me which doctor I'm going to." Well, guys, welcome to 2020. Actually, welcome to like 2008. That's what they're doing, you know? And so, and by the way, I don't mean to cut you off or put words in your mouth, and please stop me if you feel that I'm wrong or I'm hurting anything here. But the, the reality is, is that we're completely reactive in our insurance in Henry County. Do any of you all disagree with that? I mean, do you, do you think I'm wrong, Mr. Chair?
No, I don't think you're wrong. Here's, here's the key. The employees don't engage it. I don't care how much money you spend on it.
And so, and so to that point, what I'm saying is, is as I'm understanding this, and Ms. Davis, I want you to tell me if I'm wrong. If we go with option one, I don't want to say, I don't want to say, because I think it's too aggressive of a statement. If we go with option one, we're going to get the full resources available to us via Avail to be able to implement a wellness program, whatever the vernacular is that he's using. I don't know what it's called, but it's essentially going to be, his resources are going to come to Henry County. They're going to, they're going to mobilize into our workforce, and they're going to work with all of our constitution, the people that make up $3.198 million. If we go with option two, we're going to spend $60,000, which is a little bit less than $82.5, and we're going to rely on our staff to implement what the roadmap that they give us. Is that a fair statement? Is that how you understand it? Do y'all have confidence that our staff is going to implement option two? I don't.
Do not.
And I do not, and I do not say that in a derogatory manner, that Jennifer is not capable, or Ms. Bustamante or them are not capable. I'm just going back to bandwidth. What do you have to do with your daily work already? And then how are you going to decipher that into the automatic duties that you're already doing?
They just don't have the time.
Yeah, that, and I'm sure, I'm sure Mr. Parker's loving this conversation.
Why?
Because he don't get the thought on him no more either. We start spreading it out, getting things done the right way.
Or Allen.
Or Allen, exactly. No, it's not that I don't believe, staff is definitely capable. But again, we need to quit taxing staff. We're on them all the time. Meet this deadline, meet this deadline. And I'm not complaining about the staff. What I'm, my question is, again, what kind of engagement are we going to get from our employees?
Well, that's, that's where, that's where Ms. Barinow, Ms. Pittman, you know, there's going to have to be a meeting of sorts. And we're going to have to understand that this isn't, this isn't an optional discussion. We, this is a game plan that we're all going to have to buy into and row the boat the same way.
I think it's what you fit into.
Well, exactly. And that's what I'm saying here. Before I, before I could actually sit here and pull the trigger on, on $82,000, I got to know what I'm going to get. I'm not going to go spend money on an $80,000 home and have no idea if it comes with a stove or a microwave.
If I may. Option one and option two both have, and I understand, I understand the concern, believe me, from all of our other clients. I understand the concern about employee buy-in. I understand that. But we're, we are very well-versed in behavioral economics.
That's a fancy statement, right?
We've got, well, I mean, we, so we've got certifications from, from multiple places in behavioral economics. So if you imagine that every decision that employees and administrators make is more like a push and pull than it is a zero-sum situation. Both of these options, all three of the options, you're going to get a degree of behavioral economics where we sit down with the administration and we talk to, we do presentations with you guys about how to create, we refer to them as pinch points, so that the decisions that the employees are making are clear and easy to understand. Without, one of the main reasons that people, employees, make the decisions they make, generally speaking, is because the consequences of said decision aren't clear to them. And a lot of times, it falls on the administration that they didn't create a clear consequence or benefit to the employee for making a certain decision. So a lot of this, what we're talking about, and forgive me for saying this, but I want to make sure everybody understands real, you know, be real clear about what we're going to be doing. A lot of this is going to fall to leadership because the responsibility and the accountability at the end rests with you guys and your constitutional officers. So there's going to be requests from our perspective for the administration of, over the employees to take ownership as well, where you're implementing certain procedures, policies, incentives, and surcharges, things like that, to help the employee understand the implication of the decision. So I understand what you mean about the employee engagement, but where we've seen a lot of success is because there was extraordinary leadership requesting and in some cases requiring engagement.
Yeah, I don't like that. I want to be perfectly honest with you. I don't want people telling me what I have to do when I have to do it. I work for you. I work for you. But don't tell me I go to the doctor twice a month.
Well, he's not, I think he's going to...
That's not what it is.
Don't tell me I go to the gym twice a month.
Let me ask you this, is it, is it going, but is it going to a company barbecue and hearing about the program and then signing up?
That's what I'm asking. Have we, have we, have we actually engaged this at all? Are we just, we just, have we talked to the constitutionals? Have you heard before today? Have you heard this? Has Ms. Pittman heard this? Has anyone else heard this? I mean, I mean, there's a lot of different, I know a lot of people that do that. They pay gym memberships. They do all kinds of stuff, and their employees do buy in. But my question is, have we actually even looked at this? Have we had any look at this with our constitutionals or anyone else before we implement this and spend even $60,000? Has this question been put out yet?
To make that decision for them. Because we're making, yeah, we're making a decision for them, but do they want to engage in this?
Yeah, and I think it's a great idea. Trust me. I, I like it. It's not that I don't like it, and I hate to be the one negative here. And I'm not being negative. I'm just asking, have we engaged, have we engaged the people that's just going to be going to?
So, so no, I did not contact the constitutional officers about this. We've been talking about this for some time when we got done with the United Healthcare to try to look for long-term strategies. I think we did mention it in some of our constitutional officer meetings at Albritton way back, just in general about wellness and that Avail was another component of some things that they did for some long-term strategies. They would be making recommendations, so they're not going to be dictating. We would then take their recommendations and create potential policies, from my understanding of what that looks like. I, I don't view it so much as, as telling people what to do as far as, I mean, there could be some recommendations.
That is what policy is, right?
Yes, but I...
So they're not dictating, but we can create policy, so we are.
I think the wellness, I think the wellness program is, is where it's at.
No, and I get it. And I love the idea. I'm not against it at all. But my question is, okay, let's just, let's hypothetically, we said, "Ms. Barinow, take this to your employees." Ms. Barinow says, "I'm not interested in taking that to my employees."
Well, then we need to go back to market, and we need to bid the insurance again, and we need to get different plans.
No, and I get it, Commissioner. I get it. But that's my point.
Because we're at, we're at $3.1 million.
We haven't engaged at all.
We have. We, they all came here.
On this subject right here, we've engaged them.
We, do you, I don't know if you remember, but I said to every constitutional, "When we, when we roll back around to this conversation, we're going to ask for implementation," and I believe the phrase I used was a wellness plan. "Are y'all willing to engage?" Pat Langford said, "Yes." You know, Ms. Hoots sat back there in the back and said, "Absolutely," you know. Ms. Barinow, I don't know if you were sitting there, or Ms. Butler was standing there. I don't remember. But, but everybody said, "We're, we're going to do that." I know Ms. Pittman said, she was sitting right there. She said, "Yeah, we'll jump on this."
Well, if you got it, if you got it...
Now, that's not this, that's not this specific, but I think it's the same merit of the conversation, which is, we, we can't, if we continue to do what we've always done...
Can't expect a different outcome.
The premium's going to continue to rise, and we're going to be, we're going to be doing what we're doing, which is having one of the largest, if not the single-largest overhead item every year as it relates to our budget, being insurance premium. And so I hope, my, my wish is that not only are we going, not only are we going to change this, but in a little less than 900 days from now, that gentleman's going to be the superintendent of schools, and he's going to, he's going to be asking, you know, "How can we get this into the school system as well?" Because I don't think the school system does anything like this now, do they?
They do.
They do. And have their premiums gone down?
I can't address that. I'm not in that aspect of it today, but they do a wellness program today, yes.
Well, I know this. I've talked to, I've talked to at least two other counties that are engaged in this. And their, and their premiums have come down. They've, they've actually skyrocketed. And I know that, just in my own business, in looking at our experience mod, in making sure that my employees, you know, the first thing an employee wants to do when they get injured is they want to go to the emergency room. And you, you know, you can curtail that behavior and say, "Wait, hold on. We're going to use a convenient care clinic." Or we're, you know, "We're going to go to the doctor, the family practitioner that we know." And I use an example, you know, I use an example here before of the dentist that wanted to take every tooth out of a guy's head because he broke two front teeth. And that was, I mean, that's legit. It was crazy to me. But those are, those are little things that you have to do. But, but I heard, I heard people say, "You're not going to tell me which doctor I have to use." Guys, I'm sorry, but that's what we're talking about. We're, we're talking about dictating to you, is the doctor in system? Or what do they call it, in-network or out-of-network? If you're going out-of-network, the cost is going to be three to five times the cost of what it was if he's in-network.
Yeah. That, that should be the only, that should be the only question, though, network or not.
No, that's not the only...
I told you with school board, there was procedures, there was, this needs to happen. Insurance said, "Well, no, we're not paying for that." The doctor said, "This needs to happen." Insurance says, "No, we're not paying for that." School board, firsthand, not hearsay, firsthand. So, and it's sudden, throw it down. And I love the wellness. Like I said, there's companies, it's amazing the stuff y'all can do, but I just want to make sure we're going to get buy-in from everybody.
Yeah, can I...
A little bit of a sidetrail?
I'd like to just maybe try to clarify a little bit.
So we are not a wellness company.
Okay.
We're a strategic and analytical company. Wellness is one small piece of what you need to do. There's nine different components in any healthcare program. Wellness is one of those nine. One. And if you, the reason people are abandoning wellness programs is because if you only look at it from the perspective of, "We're going to roll out a wellness program," and you don't address the other eight factors that impact the wellness program, it's going to fail. And the school board, the Henry School Board does not use a program like this. It has a well, I'm very familiar with the Henry County School Board. I'm very, very familiar with Aetna. I know exactly how, how all that works. What this program does is it looks at all the different aspects and how they interact. Because 10 years ago, when we originally got into this business, brokers were getting about a 6.5% renewal on average for their clients. Carriers were giving between a 6 and a 6.5% renewal to the clients. That seemed ridiculous to me. So we decided we were going to look at the entire ecosystem. What, what goes on in the entire healthcare delivery? You've got brokers, you've got providers, you've got carriers, and the piece that was often left out is the client. You've got the client looking at that group of people saying, "Fix all my problems." So we decided we were going to look at what was going on inside the client. What inefficiencies are created? What opportunities are there for improvement inside the client? And we spent 10 years perfecting that. We're not brokers. We're not an insurance company. We're not providers. We are a strategic and analytical consultant to you. We sit on your side. We have no competing priority. None. One of the biggest problems, the inherent problems that exist in health insurance, I'm going to go on a little soapbox here for just a second. Brokers have a competing priority. They, their job is to sell you insurance. They come with a lot of different names. They come in, call consultants. They come in, call risk managers. They come in, call agents, brokers, pick a word. If they're selling you an insurance product, they've got a competing priority. The only way they make money is to sell you insurance. The only way they make more money is to sell you more insurance. Insurance companies, yes, their profits are regulated. I understand all of that. But what incentive do insurance companies have necessarily to drive your claims down if the only way they're going to boost their profits is to drive your claims up because their margins capped on the top side? So they've got a competing priority. And then there we sit. Providers, hospitals, they're in business to, to pay people. I mean, doctors make a lot of money. Nurses make a lot of money. Hospitals make a lot of money. A lot of them say we're nonprofit. All that means is they spend all their money before the year's over.
They don't have any profit.
They don't have any profit. But they had it, had they not spent it all, you know? So once again, there's a competing priority. What we've found over the years is, when a client engages us and we don't... What we found over the years is when a client engages us and we don't, standing rule in our operation, no competing priorities. We refuse to be paid by anyone except the client. That's it. We don't have competing priorities. So we can come in and look at the client and say, hey, have you thought about doing this? I know your broker's telling you not to do that, but maybe there's a competing priority there. Have you looked at this? Thought about this? It's about helping the client win because that's just what it comes down to. And in reality, if you look at our numbers, our historic results, when you compare us to every measure in the industry, what brokers get for clients, six and a half percent, what insurance companies get on rate increases, with and without, uh, plan design changes, we have all of that data. The only way we could know what we were doing was right and correct and that it worked was compare our results to every other metric in the industry. What brokers get because they say they're great at negotiating. And they are. They're good at it. Their tools are designed to do that. They still get six and a half percent on average. Medical trend factor, that's what a doctor gets, right? When you hear the word medical trend, that's a doctor's raise. That's how much of a raise the doctor's getting. Between six and 10 percent, medical trend. Insurance companies, they can only make seven and a half percent profit under federal law. That's it. That's all they make. Anything above that, they got to give back. So their job is to try to get that rate increase, the best they can every year without losing the business, the competing priority. Consumer price index. People say they don't want their insurance to go up every year. The cost a gallon, a gallon of milk goes up, the car goes up. So my question is, can we make health insurance go up no more than a consumer price index? Because if we can figure that out, we've done something.
Yeah, I know.
We outperform every metric. We beat consumer price index. We beat broker renewals. We beat carrier renewals and we beat, we beat medical trend over a 10-year period with every client. The reason it works is because we teach you and show you that you can't look at wellness in isolation. You can't look at your care and plan design in isolation. It's all one big jigsaw puzzle. And you've got to piece it together, understanding what you've got in terms of doctors. What do you have in a care delivery system here? Is it limited? If it is, we certainly can't say we want a whole bunch of clinics if you don't have enough doctors to staff clinics. So you, you've got to look and consider all these things. So my only request is as you're considering this, keep in mind, we've done this for 10 years before we decided to really push picking up new clients. Because we wanted to know we knew that we, we got it right. We outperform every single comparative metric, every single one. And it's because brokers can only do so much, carriers can only do so much. The client has to do the best job they can be, be the best client. And no, sir, Commissioner Wills, I, I would never, ever tell somebody you have to go to a certain doctor or you've got to do a certain thing. Maybe educating the employee about the financial implication to them by doing it is a big thing.
Yeah, no, it is.
But that's not wellness. That's health literacy.
Right. And I just saw that there was a $10,000 component to wellness, the reason I was speaking to wellness earlier.
Yes, sir.
That's the reason I was speaking to us.
Mr. Chairman, and Ms. Davis, is, is this a time sensitive decision? We don't have to decide today.
Look, I'm, I'm all about saving the taxpayers' money and definitely any benefit to the employee, I'm all about that. Like I said earlier, I'm not against this. I'm not. I just want to make sure that everybody's in, so.
Bring a valid point. So would it, would it, would it be acceptable to the board and to the staff that if we push this off into the second meeting in February to allow Allbritton or, and/or Ms. Davis to work with the, the constitutionals to make sure that there is commitment, they fully understand that they believe and will commit to the buy-in to, to make it a viable program? Would that, would that bring a level of comfort, Mr. Commissioner Wills?
No, I'm not uncomfortable about it at all. I like the program. I'm just trying, I'm putting the cons in there as well.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. Your, your biggest thing is the buy-in from constitutionals and staff, correct?
That, that's all it is.
And so I'm asking then, if you want to wait until the second weekend, second meeting in February to allow Ms. Davis and Allbritton to work with the constitutionals, to inform them of the opportunity? And would that allow and, and get something back from each one or a verbal nod or whatever to say, yes, absolutely, we will take the leadership stance of making sure this is implemented before we bite the bullet?
I don't think we've got to push it out that far. I mean, you should be able to have those conversations fairly quick. This isn't a, isn't a LaBelle thing, so. I would think we could actually-
Time to bring comfort.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we should be able to, so what you're saying is we should be able to revisit this in the, in the month of February. The, the, next time we're back in LaBelle, we should be able to revisit this and make a decision.
If we can do it, of course, it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, Mr. Alberdin, you have no, you have no problem holding all of this and being able to, to make staff available?
Mr. Turner, without buy-in, I can promise you will fail.
Okay. I love it.
I, I don't know how-
Ms. Davis, can y'all make that?
Thank you for that. No, I really appreciate that.
Ms. Barano, you have, I think, the largest, I think you have the largest contingency, right, of any single employer of the constitutionals? Is that correct? Would that, would, would you be good with?
Sheriff.
Say, ma'am? The sheriff's not going to be in this.
We don't, we don't ensure that.
So you could, you could, you could work with Ms. Davis and y'all could get on the same page. Awesome. All right.
I think that's, honestly, I like that idea.
I like it. It's a good idea.
I'm not against it at all. I like it. Make sure we're all going to be there.
Need a formal motion to postpone the item? We don't have a motion on the floor yet.
I don't think we need a formal motion.
We're going to put this time, time certain.
Yeah, let's make it time certain. Last meeting, last meeting in February, back in LaBelle. Yep. Pull the trigger on it.
I'd love to even hear back maybe from some of the employees, Ms. Barano and other constitutionals to say, you know, yeah, you know, make sure they see it and understand it and we get their buy-in. So with that amount of time, surely you can pull just a quasi group of handfuls in.
What's you offer is great, educating the employees. We don't have, staff don't have time to do that. They don't.
It, it's such a small piece of a huge puzzle.
Yeah.
And one thing that is a little, uh, something to consider. What we do is extraordinarily unique and it's a little bit confusing because you're used to dealing with brokers and you're used to dealing with insurance companies and you're used to dealing with, with wellness companies and things like that. The reason I'm so sure, for example, that the school board isn't doing anything like this is because we just got, uh, clarification in two different, uh, locations that we are the only people in the United States doing this.
They do, they do a witness, I mean-
They do a wellness program.
They do wellness because she's, that's a school board issued thing there.
That is right.
There are discussion treadmills in facilities, so I know there's wellness things going on.
Yes, and you need that. It, it's, it's really, but, um, there needs to be a lot of clear understanding of what to expect from us and, and how we do what we do. It's, it's really important if you want us to be successful and what, what people hire us to do is to fix things. That's it. And we, we come in from your perspective and we fix it. Whatever that means. It might be an administrative policy that's in your way. It might be that you're trying to replicate something your neighbors and all your counties doing and you just don't have the provider network to accomplish that. It could be a lot of different things, uh, but we look at all of it and figure it out. So buy-in's important for us.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You know, guys, something I think that, that would never, you know, a lot of that in-house clinic, I don't think we would ever have that because we just don't have the volume. But I mean, that's one of the things, that's probably the most well-received discussion point that I hear throughout the state. You know, everybody, everybody raves about their in-house clinic, but it just, the numbers don't add up.
Yeah, and the sad part is truthfully, like the, the convenient care?
Yeah.
It's better for us to go to Cloiston. We get, we get quicker, better service.
For you to go to the convenient care clinic right in front of?
Rather than here, yeah.
The Dunkin' Donuts than it is for you to go to the convenient care clinic here?
You can't, well, yeah. Service over there and everything is way much better. We're at the convenient care in Cloiston.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not the hospital providing-
No, sir. Convenient care.
The one in front of-
Is it overwhelmed or can't get in?
That's part of, most of it's overwhelmed, so it's better. I mean, most of our, most of the folks here drive to Cloiston to get their service, or they'll drive to Lee County Convenience Care on 41, same thing as Cloiston.
When you say overwhelmed, you mean there's too many people here that are using it or that just don't see you?
Can't keep up, yeah.
Can't get in.
Really?
I went to the one in Cloiston. I didn't have a problem.
God, we went over there. We walked, we walked in the door. Within 10 minutes, uh, we were seen and, and probably 20 minutes later was out the door with the prescriptions needed. And over here, like Mr. Harris said, you just can't get in the door. The nuts, even with an appointment, it's, it's tough, so.
Medic can't get enough help.
And again, I think this program will be good. We just need to make sure we, we are going to do pretty good, so. Um, next thing is, uh, Mr. Parker.
You want the approval of the, uh, GMP for phase two?
Uh, yes, sir. I would like that very much.
So moved.
Second, and do we know what the, uh, do we know what the, um, breakdown will be from roof versus the other items or they don't have that yet?
Um, it's in there. It's about, how much Chris Tell's charging?
No, sir.
Breakdown.
I know the breakdown with the grant or the breakdown within Chris Tell's cost for the roof itself.
So the roof we know is going to get back. It doesn't matter. I, I'll, I'll look again, but I just didn't see it, so.
It's, you just got to look. It's in here. Got to find the contractor. See if that is. It's about 250,000, let's say.
Okay.
Maybe 265, but there's also some other stuff that has to go on, like some fancy decorative stuff on the outside, so it's in addition to CFS.
Yes, sir.
All right. I don't want to use the wrong architectural name. I got them.
Okay, so we got a motion back from Mr. Harris, second by Commissioner Turner. Need further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, the next item I have for you, I emailed out yesterday, is phase six of Helms Road and State Road 29 intersection improvements. We have a four-lane road going to a two-lane road. DOT gave you a grant in December. The board approved, which completes the four-laning to State Road 29 and then four lanes from 29 down to two lanes.
So moved. Second. Motion back from Mr. Harris, second back from Mr. Turner. Any further discussion on this?
When will you know the fiscal impact?
I know it right now. I emailed it out. It's, um-
April.
Six, just under 610,000. 610,000, fully funded by DOT. And then once we have a cost estimate, we will give it to DOT to provide SIGBE funding, to solicit SIGBE funding.
Should be ready by April, though.
Not this. This is something totally different.
Okay.
Mark, before you ask, end of February, they're supposed to start, be done in April with the signals, both ends.
We're going to hold you to it.
All right.
I mean, both ends, roads open, right?
That's it. Sometime in April. I don't know the day, but it's April.
Was that 2020 or 2021? Well, you just said April, so that's kind of a broad.
It's good if they-
I do have one add-on.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Salius Care for inmate psychiatric, um, treatment is, uh, planning to expire in a couple weeks and I need permission to send it for another year because your office is in agreement and we just need to extend their contract for another year.
So moved.
Second. Motion back from Mr., which one of y'all got that? Mr. Swindle, and second by Ms. Byrd. All in the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hey, here to the public, anyone in the public like to address the board? Uh, I think-
Attorney left, that's something. I, I have something at some point.
Okay, Mr. Martin, would you like to come on up? Did I miss you in the first meeting or did you pull us in afterwards?
Uh, after.
Okay, thanks. I hope I didn't skip you there.
Well, y'all were doing a workshop. I didn't want to interject, but I would have been glad to comment if, if given the audience, but if I could have just a few minutes now, I'd appreciate it as a follow-up to your discussions in your recreation workshop earlier. I really want to, uh, thank, uh, your county administrator for the collaborative efforts we've been enjoying between the city and the county and, and of course that extends to this board, uh, giving her the, uh, backing to do that. I'm doing the same with our board of commissioners and, uh, look forward to many, many positive outcomes resulting from that going forward in a number of service areas. Particularly regarding recreation, uh, I thank her for inviting me to join you and listen in at the workshop this morning. I hope to have an opportunity to engage, uh, in further conversation with you. I, I understand you're going to discuss this again, upcoming meeting in, in Cloiston. That would be great. I don't mind coming over here and love LaBelle, but, uh, anytime we can do it there, more of our folks will be able to engage and, and listen in. Real quickly, uh, I, I am new to the county. Been here six months now. Uh, I've met all of you and, and, and looking forward to getting to know you and working with you. But one of the things I'm really, uh, excited about is our partnerships with the county and how we've been able to, uh, discuss, uh, mutual beneficial, uh, efforts to provide better service to both our, uh, all our citizenry, which are your, all your citizens. And, um, I'm really glad I came this morning. One of the areas, I, I, my background, a lot of familiarity, I won't go through that, with recreation, a lot of success stories and some major challenges, uh, were dealt with. Not unlike some of the, uh, very similar to some of the ones you were discussing this morning. Obviously, facilities, a big part of that. Uh, one of the things I've always focused on is, uh, some people call it cradle to the grave. That sounds a little extreme to me, so I, I'm, I'm going to say recreation's somewhere in between both, uh, uh, events, but, uh, I do want to do things and, and the board has endorsed that in Cloiston that affect all populations, all age groups. You were just talking about wellness. Uh, that's a big part of it. You need to have adequate facilities for every, uh, age group so that they all benefit because not everyone, you know, everyone's a child, but everyone doesn't stay a child, as, as you discussed adequately. Won't belabor that, but, uh, look, I'm glad to hear some of the discussions. I learned a lot about the East Rec, West Rec discussion. That was intriguing to me. Uh, I want you to leave a one message of everything I might, uh, comment on. The one to me that's most important is there is no reason that we can't work together in recreation. We do in other areas and that can be done if we'll check the egos and the, uh, and, and, and leave the history behind us, as I was discussing with some of you. And we try to stay out of the rearview mirror. We learn from history, but let's look forward and, uh, there is no reason we can't work together to come out with what I refer to as a win-win solution in that program area. But the key to it, in my opinion, is fairness and equity. It, it can't be unfair to either party or you don't need the agreement. Uh, we do have an interlocal. I would like to work with your staff to, uh, look at that and see how we can better that. I want to do, uh, more analysis on our end in terms of the numbers and the needs. Cloiston's blessed with some really nice recreational facilities. Uh, obviously, some of them are aging. Uh, in particular, a couple of them are, have a lot of age on them. And, uh, I, I want to work collaboratively with the county to see our facilities be the best they can be for all county and city residents that take advantage and, and use those. Uh, we appreciate the support we currently get from the county and want to work to, um, make sure that that is fair and equitable to all parties. Um, but there is no, in my opinion, and that's all it is, uh, being new to the county and based on my experience, no need for the county to do their own thing. Uh, I think, uh, you certainly have that right, but I think, uh, a partnership in this regard, uh, would be a wise investment for both parties. And our board is eager. We discussed it to some degree last night's, uh, commission meeting and I advised them I would be here today to listen and, and, uh, offer our, uh, I would be here today to listen and, and, uh, offer our, uh, input in your discussions going forward. But we, they want to be a partner, and, um, I, I, of course, look forward to a future audience with the board on this topic. I'll be glad to answer any questions, but I know you've had a long meeting, and so I'll stop at that and just thank you again for all your cooperation and your attitudes. Uh, since I've been here, it's been a, uh, personal blessing to me, and, and, uh, I, I really like this county. I like the, the city I'm working in, and, and I like the partners we have. And I really appreciate what, uh, the success you've had in the Lublubelle area. Uh, ours is a little different. We already have facilities. We've just got to look at, uh, how we can best utilize them and maximize the potential working with the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any, any questions, or...
Do I have any questions? Mr. Chair? Mr. Martin, Ms. Davis, for y'all specifically, um, flagpole coming into Cloiston. You know, just one thing that I'm hoping that we can celebrate is a huge victory, and I, I think that this is the definition of a low-hanging fruit, and I feel that y'all share that same sentiment. Any, any update?
Yeah, I met with, uh, DOT, uh, district, uh, representatives Friday, and, uh, they've already reached out to me. I've got a call when I get back, uh, to the office from, uh, one of their subordinates to discuss specifics about it. Uh, it's not gonna be a slam dunk, easy, uh, adventure, because the first thing at LK, and I know you know him, he, he smiled a little bit when I brought it up, and so, uh, I think they've had some history with it, uh, not necessarily here, but in other areas. But, uh, we've been doing our research on costs, uh, talking to folks in More Haven about their example, and, uh, I didn't get a no.
Okay.
So that's the key, and I'm looking forward to having this conversation with a staff person to see what the details are of what we have to do.
Wonderful.
Sorry, Commissioner Turner, I'm sorry. What was the question?
So, coming into, coming into Cloiston, from the west heading east, um, strong desire to see a flagpole in the middle of the meeting?
Oh, I thought you said flag hole.
I thought you said flag pole, too.
Flag pole with a...
For the flag pole.
A flag... A giant structure with a large American flag flying.
We speak that English now. We can speak it a minute.
But besides that, new big sign y'all are putting up.
Sir?
It's a perfect spot.
Well, that's...
It's not a perfect spot.
It's nothing.
But anyway, but...
But we, uh, I, I'll let you, keep you and Jennifer informed. I'll keep Jennifer informed.
Wonderful. I'd love to see just something in the inbox on that. It'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Uh, business by, uh, Mr. Lap, I'm sorry.
Just one thing. The, at the last meeting in Pioneer, when you talked about the off-highway vehicles, you, I think Commissioner Swindle asked for the report, uh, first meeting in February, on what to move forward. I just wanted to let you know, I'm coordinating with, uh, the Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles to get some guidance about what vehicles really are allowed on what roads. I don't have that answer yet. Maybe I'll have it in time for the first meeting in February, but I just wanted to let you know that a little bit of that is still up in the air, so I don't know if you still want to me to tell you what I got then, or it might not be complete then.
What we want is complete, accurate data so we can make good decisions, and, and so if you need more time, let's take more time. We don't want to do anything there that, that...
But I'd love to have it as an agenda item, just for a general update at that meeting as well. And this is something that I'm gonna ask for every meeting, and, and then I, you know, right in lockstep with that. I wanted to ask the board if y'all would allow Shane to create a GIS, a colored GIS map of the Pioneer community and the Ladilla community. If it needs to be two maps, that's fine, but I want it, Shane. I want it to where, you know, you can, you can walk up to the map, and you can go, "I live there," and you can see your home. You know what I mean? And, and I, I want it, and I want to see it for Pioneer wide, you know? So I don't know if the whole picture will be that big. Do you, do you get what I'm saying from a visionary standpoint? The reason why I want to do this, you all, is, you know, I was in, I've been in Pioneer two Sundays consecutively, and, um, you know, just riding the main thoroughfares, and, you know, you, you have to ask what's responsibly. Well, it's illegal. What I witnessed was illegal. I didn't call nine-one-one or the Henry County Sheriff's Department, because I'm, I'm, I don't know, maybe I'm out of title or something. I don't know. Maybe I'm a bad human, but I'm going down Henry Isles Boulevard. I'm doing thirty-seven miles an hour. I'm speeding, and two four-wheelers, very nice, uh, dressed people, that, I don't know them from Adam's House Cat, come by me, boom, boom, on the, and there's two people on each four-wheeler. So four humans, two four-wheelers, no helmets, and I said, "You know, I wonder where they're going." They passed me about the, the Pioneer Community Center on Henry Isles, going north. I just said, "You know what? I'm gonna be that guy." I turned around, I followed them all the way to the firehouse. Um, I didn't take off, run them down like Dukes of Hazzard or anything. When they, when they went past the fire department, I said, "Well, they're, they're either going to gas up their vehicles, or they're just going to check out a trail up there." Turned around, went back into the backside of Pioneer, worked all the way to the, uh, far west end. Um, Shane, if people are mad about the graded roads in Pioneer, man, they just gotta be mad, because I just don't, I don't, I don't get it. And I've had people yell at me about Panama and the conditions that it's in, but I think those roads are in really good condition, but maybe I've gone nose-blind. Um, and that's another thing, too, that I want on this map, is I want to be able to look like Fourteenth and Ver, you know, I want to be able to say, "Okay, that's white right now. That's morrow." But, but you're gonna have to convince me why we can't, s, by 2024, we're gonna have these four roads that are also morrow, and, and, you know, the constituent didn't have to lay anything. There's a handful of things I want to talk about as it relates to that, but I want to get a literal roadmap that we can all see. And then, uh, I, I probably got passed by six or seven other side-by-sides, and, I mean, technically, all of those people are breaking the law, I think, but I don't know. But I just, I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna open up a can of worms. I'm not saying that we're not gonna do anything. I'm just saying, gosh, I don't see anybody running them down with the Henry County Sheriff's Department. There's no SWAT. There's no four-wheelers. There's no helicopter, and there's a lot of people that are doing it right now, and I just think that we have to be cognizant of the unintended consequences.
Permission to turn, I had a student to tell me Friday that it was legal.
Everybody's saying it's legal, by the way, now.
They said it's legal.
Yeah.
And I said, "Baby, it's not legal." He said, "Oh, yeah, Ms. Byrd, it's legal."
Yeah, so I've heard that, too, Ms. Byrd. I've heard that we, because of our meeting, we, we legalized it, so I'm pretty sure that was Commissioner Swindle that did that. So, uh...
You're welcome.
Um, I'm just, I'm, I'm ready to have, I want to get that map, and I'm gonna commit, I don't know if I'm gonna commit a couple Friday nights and a couple Saturday mornings or what, but I'm gonna buy some food. We're gonna have a big conversation, and I'm gonna know who those people are, uh, more intimately that are for, and then what for looks like, and then anti, and what anti looks like, and we're gonna actually try to land on something, you know? Twenty-five or thirty, that like to ride four-wheelers?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think everybody's having that problem, so it's, you know, it's just not in the one area.
I got a couple different hybrids in my mind, but I'm, I'm, I'm excited about getting out to Pioneer, meeting with people in a much more intimate manner, so, yep. That's it. I'm done, Mr. Chair.
Uh, business by district, Mr. Swindle.
We're, we are, well, number one, I want to say that we have festival season, season coming up, you know? Everything, Henry County, Schwerer Swamp Cabbage Festival, Brown Sugar, you know? And so, look forward to seeing everyone there and engaging in all those events. Um, what are we, five months or so out from engaging in the budget hearing? Starting budget process again. Um, we, we broached the subject just a little bit last year. Does, does this board, do we, do y'all have any desire, or do y'all have any, um, uh, desire at all to look at what an MSBU would look like, uh, for, for the life safety portion of our taxes, as opposed to doing it? Because we can't do that all at once. It takes some looking into, some analytics, and even some legal stuff to happen. And so, if it's something y'all want to look at, um, we need to kind of start immediately doing some of the background work to, to even put it together. And, and again, basically, the whole thing is, is taking out of ad valorem, um, what the, the taxes equals to on fire, EMS, and law enforcement, and putting that on MSBU to where everyone pays a set share for dwelling, sort of like what we're doing for rec. So, uh, it's, it's just a thought, you know, we, we were way late last year. I'm trying to be proactive and start early this year to see if you even have a desire. If y'all all think it's out in left field, then that's the answer, but if we want to look at it, we have to start getting some, some of the data together today.
I don't, do we have time to do that?
Well, we have a fire workshop in February, and so that was gonna be the initial part of that discussion, and then in order to create a new MSBU, that has to be done in December.
You couldn't do it this year.
MSBU's have to be created, um, before March first, and that's with permission of the property praiser and the tax collector for an extended timeframe. But we're too late to do a new MSBU. New MSTU, I don't know, I, I wasn't, I didn't research this for today, so I, I don't have an answer for you, but I, I'm not sure if we're too late or not for MSTU. They're different.
Yes, sir. Right.
Now, the only question I'd have, if, you know, what you're talking about? If that would mean more, if the same people would just be paying...
No, the, the overall, the overall picture and way to look at it is, is what, what percentage of our county pays no ad valorem taxes?
That's what I meant.
And so, what you would do is you would take the same set amount of expenses and spread it amongst everyone who lives, who has a dwelling in county. And so, on average, we're not gonna, if you're paying the average, you're not gonna see very much. If you're paying high taxes, it's gonna come down, and then if you're paying no, you're gonna pay some. And so, it would kind of levy out some of that.
Because we, we have a ton of hundred-twenty-fives that don't pay nothing.
And guess where the services go, by the way?
Yeah, that's where they go.
That's right.
So you are talking about a BU?
I'm talking about a BU.
Okay.
And if it's not this year, and if we're too late, if we don't start the discussion now, we're gonna be here again next year, talking about it again.
Well, the one thing you will have to do, if you do want to do it for a new BU for, um, uh, public safety, you, you will really need to hire a consultant, just like you've done for recreation. That, that's just the huge, to, to evaluate what the dollar assessment should be, you know, staff wouldn't, we'd just be wagging at a number.
That's right.
So you really need to have a consultant to evaluate what the appropriate amount should be, and what even the unit of measurement is. Is it, is it per square foot for a business? Is it per square foot of a house? Is it, is it acreage of the land? I mean, there's so many variables about what your unit of measurement is.
I don't disagree.
It's a big deal.
It is a big deal, and that's why we need to start early and go together and, and work slowly to get it right.
That it might not be what we want.
It may not.
But we can look.
It may not, but that's what, we probably could do some overall analytics before we went as far as hiring some consultants to get that exact number, I suspect. I don't want to put any money into it if we don't have some broad analytics and some idea of what it would look like before we really invested cash.
We did a little bit of analysis, just based on today's, or last year, maybe, budget dollars. And so, one of the biggest questions is, do you include law enforcement or not? So, we already have fire, MSBU's, so we've already done that. And so, then the question would be, okay, if you do EMS, you could do just EMS, because that's a board function. But if you start, and you could even probably fold in EM and, and, and a few things like that, but when you start folding in law enforcement, um, for the sheriff's budget at, at thirteen-plus million dollars, that's where, that, that's where it's at. And so, then when you look at that and what that equals from a BU versus a ad valorem perspective, and how, um, how, how you figure that out from a benefit of, of taxing folks, that, that's gonna be the biggest...
It's gonna be huge. That's right. And I'm a huge proponent for doing that.
Some counties have it just for the sheriff's department.
That's right. That's correct.
Some have it just for fire.
That's right.
You know, there's a, there's a whole bunch of different variables.
Right.
Separate, you could do it together.
Chunk is the sheriff's department.
Mr. Chair, I'm all about looking at it. I mean, I think it would be, I think it would be interesting to see on paper, anyway, you know? Definitely something we need to, need to look at, for sure.
Ms. Davis, how much I know, again, and I'm not talking about getting into the brass tacks and finite things, you know, that Mr. Attorney Lap brings up a good point, you know? That it has to be analyzed by a professional, but could we look at it from a broad perspective and say, here's what, you know, you remember a few years ago, we looked at what, a hundred-thousand-dollar home pays, and a two-hundred, and put that in there, and then what would it look like if you pulled out certain segments, and then what it would look like with MSBU's? I think that, that would be very helpful for us, just to get a broad generalization.
It'd be good to look at what other counties are doing, too, that's in this.
Possibly. Uh, like counties, but I would like to see rural counties that are, you know, like size and...
And they can tell you what they're doing.
Right.
I did it a while back, and it's all over the place, but we'll get, we'll get all that back together and, and...
Okay. And, and, and I'm not asking for it next meeting. I know that that's gonna be a heavy lift, so, you know, what, what, what do you feel like would be an acceptable time?
Like at, at our, at our fire workshop, that, that, you know, we can...
Natural lead-in.
That, that's an appropriate place to talk.
Perfect. Okay, good, good.
What's his next one?
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Byrd?
First of all, um, I'd like to thank the sheriff's department and Judge Hill. Um, we went into the school on Friday, did a gap program, turned out very nice, and then we had a community meeting concerning the rec and the youth. Um, one of the things I'd like to bring back to the board, um, Mr. Chairman, on the next board meeting, is, um, the Ortons for Harlem Civic Center and the Revs Civic Centers, um, to give you thoughts on some of the people who like to have alcohol there, but I need to bring it back to the table for discussion, so if you can just add that to the agenda for the, um, next board meeting. Appreciate it.
They can have alcohol at the civic center right now, right?
No.
No?
Not right now.
Not unless it's special.
And, and to bring it back up discussion, it, it, it puts some of our people in a position as if, um, if somebody was to have alcohol, they're responsible then to call the sheriff's department. They also responsible to shut them down, but it puts them in a position, so I'd just like to open that discussion in the next board meeting and not today.
Chair?
Can we get with, uh, Jennifer Glades County about, uh, the partnership on the fire station in, in North Lubelle? Because, uh, you know, we looked at different sites. I rode with them and looked at sites, uh, just see where they're at. If, if they're not where we're at, we need to go and do it on our own.
Well, there is a, a preservation request right now that we're working together on, that Glades County is sponsoring for, um, dollars to, to...
Do the dollars include Henry County, or just...
It, it's a joint request.
All the same pot?
Yes, sir. It's a joint request, so originally, I think it was like eight hundred thousand or something like that. They were requesting, and, um, we increased it to one million, and so it was a joint request between Henry and Glades County to create...
So, will, will they be getting the answer on that, or have they already got one?
Session is still in process.
So, they gotta wait after session?
Yes.
Okay.
Chair? Just, just, uh, in, in relationship to that, I mean, um, Jennifer, I, I sent a very verbose email to Ms. Hunter wanting to know, you know, where are we at with regards to what Gray Robinson's doing? Can they, you know, um, she alluded to the fact that they, they give a ton of updates, but, um, I want the entire board to be, you know, seeing what those updates are. Uh, I know we have a million for, a million-dollar IED ask for, um, force main, and a million-dollar ask for, uh, hardening of the, um, public safety facility. Did we designate a specific building?
It's, it's various. It's multiple facilities.
Uh-huh. And so, I just, I don't know, I don't, like, do y'all know what that ask looks like? Have y'all seen it as it's broken down? I do not, and I'm just wondering, because, you know, we're, we're all getting ready to make the pilgrimage up there, and I'm not saying that our legislators know exactly either, but good lord, I'm so much more effective whenever I'm able to speak to specifics. And, you know, I, I look at Gray Robinson as the entity that gets us the audience. That's what they do. But now, it's our job to sell that, that request. And, um, if, if I don't know specifically how that request is worded, what it breaks down as, you know, I could give you all anecdote of whenever the Corps of Engineers had one of their, their technical gurus chew me apart in DC, and I will tell you, I learned a valuable lesson, and I went back up there the next year, and, and we were able to get stuff done, and, and I'm excited about that. And so, I just feel a little bit out of context going up on this one.
Yes, and he's working with, um, Mr. Flumkolt, and he's working on getting you an update so you don't have more, um, details of that from the law right now.
Okay, they don't need to send me the update. They can send me what they have.
Right.
Because an update sounds dangerously close to, "We don't have it." So, you know, and it's, and it's, I'm shooting from the hip, and it's no different than what West Rec's doing with, you know, "We have a great plan, but the plan's old." And so, um, that, and then, um, I am, uh, requesting a meeting, uh, behalf of the county, uh, with DEP, with our technical expert on, uh, Four Corners. Um, I attended that BMAP meeting with you. Uh, I talked to a lot of people about that off, offline, and, um, I'm shocked at how many people are, are excited about that, so hopefully, you know, hopefully, because he and I have a bet, I think he's taking me to lunch somewhere, so we gotta get that done. And then, um, uh, you mentioned, you mentioned something that triggered, I can't remember what it was, I'll let it go, I can't remember what it was, but, man, it frustrates me, but Because an update sounds dangerously close to, we don't have it, so, you know, and it's, and it's, I'm shooting from the hip, and it's no different than what West Rec's doing with, you know, we have a great plan, but the plan's old, and so, um, that, and then, um, I am, uh, requesting a meeting, uh, behalf of the county, uh, with DEP, with our technical expert, on, uh, Four Corners, um, I attended that BMAP meeting with you, uh, I talked to a lot of people about that offline, and, um, I'm shocked at how many people are, are excited about that, so hopefully, you know, hopefully, because he and I have a bet, I think he's taking me to lunch somewhere, so we gotta get that done, and then, um, uh, you mentioned, you mentioned something that triggered, I can't remember what it was, I'll let it go, I can't remember what it was, but, man, that frustrates me, but fares and all that stuff are coming up, so I, I did make a note, that's it in a nutshell.
Who we? Are you looking at something there, or we, we good to go, or?
Yeah, so, so this was just, um, regarding the Harlem Civic Center, and so our ordinance says that there's no alcohol in that facility without permission of the county administrator, and we also have a separate policy that we have, that you all have adopted, that says no alcohol in our facilities without special permission of the county administrator, what our policy says, basically, is if you're a non-for-profit, um, and you're doing, say, like a fund res, fundraising type of thing, um, and you get special permission from the county administrator, and you get all your proper, um, insurance and licenses and so forth like that, um, then we allow it, but outside of that, we have not been allowing it, so I think what Commissioner Byrd is wanting to bring that up for discussion, for the board, for you all, to consider if you want to keep it that way, or if you're willing to. Listen to changing that specifically for the Harlem Civic Center.
You know, once you do it for, uh, one, you gotta do it for all of them.
Well, I thought that's what happened, that's why I recalled that, that conversation, I guess that was the caveat that we did, because, because I know Pioneer is never going to have alcohol in the community center, I know Felda, y'all are adamant, they'll never have it, there was, there was, and there was like two other facility that. Yes, yeah.
Well, it, it would be an ordinance, it would not be an ordinance change, it would be a facility use policy change, which is a separate document, the ordinance is already flexible, it says it's per, with the permission of the administrator, separately, you have a facility use policy that you've adopted over time, there's one that's in place now, that talks all about this, I can't remember what it says about alcohol, but I think it's a lot for private, too, but.
Yeah, that was what, two years ago?
It was 2008, then 2011.
Eleven was the last time we looked at it, too?
The only thing that was changed on the 18th was the time, 2018 was just the time that was changed.
Problem with the law that is, is more like a suggestion, they do it anyway.
But it caused a problem for the workers when they do it anyway.
I know.
So, if that worker's there, and she have to call the law enforcement to shut them down, and then it, it, it caused hardship for that, for the employee.
Well, I just, I, I'm, you know, I, I sent you a text the other day, I'm getting so wore out with, with people being viewed as a villain because they're doing the accountable thing.
Their job, right.
They're doing, they're holding everyone accountable, and so they're the bad guy, and, you know, it may be ultimately something that gets me removed from this position, but people put you in to do the right thing, to bow up your back and make the decision that doesn't make everyone happy all the time, and I just, I, I'm, I'm excited about having the conversation, I love chatting on and.
Put people in harm's way, um, it'd be a great discussion.
If, if that's putting somebody in harm's way, then they need to get their tell arrested quickly, because if there's a policy that says there's no alcohol in any building, then it's really that simple.
Even the taxpayers want it there.
Yeah.
Well, that, and the, you know.
Discussion, like.
The people renting the facility, that, they're accountable, you can't rent the facility no more.
Yeah.
Simple as that. Then they get upset about that, and they try to cut corners, do different things, I mean, and Felda, the biggest problem with Felda is, a lot of out-of-county residents rent the facility, but they'll use someone in county to rent the facility, and then when you go down there, you'll have six bags, huge bags of cans and bottles and, um, and it's every facility, and I'm not just.
But do they cut loose, I mean, they get, they, when you say cans and bottles, is alcoholic stuff?
Oh, yeah.
In Felda?
Oh, yeah.
They do not do that in Pioneer, maybe I'm being naive right now, but I'm gonna say right now, boy, Mr. Bozner called SWAT.
You know, and honestly, I've, I've, I've been to the, um, Harlem Civic Center, same thing, birthday party, that wasn't what the flowers on the wall was, and I took pictures to bring them back and show, this wasn't a birthday party, this was, yeah, it was a Disney princesses, and it wasn't Pocahontas, so, we just gotta be careful, when, when we do all of this, we need to keep in mind, yes, it is for the safety, but these are also county facilities.
Yeah.
And we're asking the taxpayers to pay the money to keep them repaired and restored, we gotta be, you know, okay.
And the reason why that facility's being used is because it's the cheapest one.
Sure.
You can go get a private facility to do something that needs to be happening on a private facility, you know?
Well, that's what I've said many times, when, when we had the discussion before, I said, what does it cost to rent the Lublabelle Civic Center, or the John Boy?
That's exactly right.
They don't want to pay that, because they can rent, you know, Felda for a hundred fifty bucks, but then they destroy it, we can't fix what they destroy, the deposit's a hundred dollars, a hundred dollars doesn't buy five chairs, so we, when, facilities are, they're, that's a, that's a touchy subject, and I get it, so, that will be a good discussion to have. Anything else on that end? No, I was gonna ask you a question while I go in, it slipped my mind, so I guess we're gonna get off easy. I am getting old, Ms. Byrd, I'm almost up to forty years old now, meeting adjourned.